You can't change. You can't make changes when it needs to.
Well, they find our flaws.
They were gonna give you a hand when you got here, but... Everybody stand up and give them a hand. Could've started the pledge of allegiance.
Y'all ready?
Yeah.
Now, we can start now.
All right, we'll call the meeting in the City Council order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of council here. Everyone's here except Councilman Wynn, who is out of the country. If you'll stand, our Missouri City Police Department Honor Guard will post our colors and lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Well, everyone, please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Charge of the last day evening.
Come on up here, gang. Look at this. Okay, mama. Where's daddy? Oh, yeah, okay. He'll show up later.
Tighten up a little bit, let everybody get on.
I know. Everybody in? Well, these young people right here represent the future leadership of this community. These are gonna be your mayors and council one of these days, hopefully, right? That's what they all aspire to wanna be, I don't know why. But anyway, these are Mayor's Youth Commission. It's a program that, I guess I started, this'll be nineteen years ago. You're the nineteenth group that's done this. And, you know, what we do is every year, and our Parks Director, Larry Foose, is back there in the back, and he kinda ramrods this organization for me now because it's grown to the point that it needs, needs full-time leadership. But, you know, years ago when we started this, it's an interesting concept in that, you know, I recognize the fact that the youth of our community represent the larger population. They really do. They're three-fourths of our population. And, you know, their concerns of what's happening in the community was just as important to myself and the council as what the adults were. And I felt that they were being overlooked. And when we started this program, we sat down with the kids, and I never will forget, and I tell this story, I think, every year, is that I sat down with the kids and I made them list the twenty-five things that most affected their lives. And you'd really be surprised what those were. I was somewhat surprised, but shouldn't have been, having teenage kids myself. But, you know, nineteen years ago, the things that were at the top of that list were teenage sex, teenage violence, drugs in the classrooms, all this other kinda stuff, which we thought about and knew. We had, you know, violence in the homes, you know, split parents, things like that. Those were all typical of what kids were talking about. And over the years, I saw that change, and as I began to talk to the kids about what concerned them the most is what shocked the school administrators, when I told them that the number-one list on their classroom list today was the lack of qualified teachers. Smart kids. And the fact that many of these kids were in classes, being taught by teachers who weren't really qualified to teach them, that there were teachers teaching math that majored in English. But that was a problem of budgeting, you know, from the state level and everything else, that forced teachers to teach classes that they were not necessarily qualified to teach in. But we had to have the teachers. Now, kids, let me tell you what, a long time ago, a long time ago, I took these kids on a tour that you better be glad you didn't go on. I took you to the penitentiary in Sugar Land, to a program called Operation Outreach, that was led by the prisoners in the Sugar Land Penitentiary. And for those kids who went through that nineteen years ago, that was a true experience because the people that led that were in there for life. Now that unit's closed down, and so is that program. But we also went to the Juvenile Detention Center in Richmond to show where you didn't wanna be. And out of that, we hope that the kids that were in this Mayor's Youth Program, if they went and told somebody else, and told another kid, "I went to a place you don't wanna be," then that was one kid that we had saved. I wasn't worried about the kids that we picked to be in this Mayor's Youth Program. Early on, it was, we had the gamut. And at that time, we had kids from all of our middle schools and all of our high schools that were represented, because I wanted to know what they were doing. I had kids that went from middle school all the way through high school, and then graduated and went off to college. And I loved writing those letters, telling, you know, their deans or whatever it was for admission that they were in the Mayor's Youth Commission. Now, for the general public, these kids don't just come to a meeting up here, they have to work. I'm gonna give them an oath in a minute, the same oath that we take as a council, that makes a commitment of what their position is and what they're gonna do. But they get to work their spring cleanup, they get to work in the Snow Fest Parade, they get to work the Easter egg hunt, they get to work anything that Larry and the Parks and Rec Crew, and Don and back there, all of those guys that are helping you all. The one thing that we require you to do is attend. And as I said early on, if you're gonna get in this program, you need to make a commitment to be part of it. Now, the one excuse is schoolwork, churchwork. Those things that you need an excuse to get out of is fine, as long as you let us know that that's something that you need to attend. It's those that don't attend. And these have the same things that our commissions do. They miss three meetings in a row, unexcused meetings, they're off the commission. So they need to make a commitment of what their position is. So I'm gonna try to read these kids' names. You know, we have the most diverse community in the region. And when I read these names, you're gonna understand why we're the most diverse city in this region, because I have a problem sometimes. So, kids, I'm gonna apologize upfront. If I mispronounce your name, don't worry about it. You're on national TV, and nobody cares. Right? All right. So I want you to raise your right hand. Everybody raise, that's your right hand, this one. And you're gonna repeat after me, and I'm gonna say "I." You'll say "I," and then you state your name, and then we'll go from there, okay? Now, listen and see if I can get some of these names that I don't know. All right, you ready? "I."
"I."
State your name.
"To the best of my abilities."
Hey, "Do solemnly swear."
"Do solemnly swear."
"That to the best of my ability."
"That to the best of my abilities."
"I will faithfully participate."
"I will faithfully participate."
"In and execute the duties."
"In and execute the duties."
"And responsibilities."
"And responsibilities."
"Of being a member of the Mayor's Youth Commission."
"Of being a member of the Mayor's Youth Commission."
"Of the City of Missouri City, Texas."
"Of the City of Missouri City, Texas."
Very good. All right. Now, my challenge is, give them a hand. All right. Now, my challenge comes. Chloe Benson. First Chloe. I said it right, didn't I?
You oughta maybe get that one, man.
Sharona Chander. Did I say it right? Kinda. I'll tell you what it is. Kinda, okay. Oh, Courtney Cooper. I got that right, didn't I, Courtney?
No, you missed that one up.
Samo Enda Parampo. Oh, okay. And how about Smithu, is that your brother?
Yeah.
You did a good job, too. Sergio Garza. Sergio? Kirsten Gillum.
Kirsten.
Kirsten. Pretty close. Oh, Luke Gilbo. Howdy, boy, Luke. I get that name right. Andrew Gilbo. Brothers? And that's another thing, you know, we have a lot of brothers and sisters who have gotten into different stages and have gone through the entire Mayor's Youth Program, and have come back and told me they both survived, and they're both doing great, so... You're in what grade?
Seventh.
Seventh, and you're in?
Eleventh.
See, there's seven to eleven, that's great. Jade Hager. Jade, did you get it right?
Yes.
Not better. Tatiana Hughes.
How's that?
Huh? I got it? Cassia Jabaly?
Jabaly.
Jabaly, okay. Rachel Caruvilla?
Caruvilla.
Caruvilla. All right, that's pretty close. Oh, Alexia Lewis.
Here.
Thank you, Alexa.
Alexi.
How about Tamisha Lundry? Lundie. I got it, didn't I, Tamisha? Cassandra Martinez. I know I got that right, right, Cassandra? All right, Makira Anders Morrison.
Makira.
Makira. Oh, lordy, that's why I didn't teach. Hmm. Riza Protam-Nod. Okay.
Velma.
And sister, right? I got a, let me see, what does it say? Is there another one?
Yeah.
Your brother. Y'all don't like each other, don't understand? So what grade are you in?
Seventh.
Seventh, and... Ten, you had to think of it. All right, so you're gonna be in longer than him, right? You're gonna go all the way through. Howdy, boy. Smitha Tamara Velli.
Tamara Velli.
Okay. That's close. Little Laren Turner. Oh, mama. Did you wanna suppose, pretty mom?
Please.
Your battery's dead. We picked on her. Her dad is chairman of our Parks Board, so he will get firsthand at all this stuff. Vance Vaughn. Thank you, Vance. Elizabeth Zoo. Thank you, Elizabeth. Sarah Sadrue.
Yes.
Hey! Pretty good. Sergio Garza. We got one. What's yours? What's hers? These didn't show, these had something else to do, but I'm gonna read your names, so if you're one, what is your last name? Let's see where you are down. We'll read them. Brandon Austin. Oh, you are here. Maricel Baker. Right? Shavana Doshi. Milan Doshi. I thought I read Alexis Higgins, did I not? Lenny Kirit Katu. Crystal Kelly. Ruben Kurian. Benjamin Kurian. Rachel McCheryl. Travis Ross. Lakashion Sherman. Lakashion Sherman, last one, best one. Any of y'all wanna say anything? Anyway, give them a hand, this is a great group of kids. All right. We raised your right hand, you swore before this entire council here. Yeah, they saw ya. I like this arm of green. Means you're gonna work. This looks like something we had in prison. Thank you, guys. Good luck to you guys. Yeah, gather up. Okay, mamas and dads.
You gotta get up front, bud.
Someone ever see him?
Come on. You may have to back up in the thunder. You don't have to get in a hurry, we'll stay here as long as you won't take pictures.
Guys, can anybody look for me? And if I can't see you, if you can't see me, I can't, I can't see you. I can't see you. And can you see me? That way I can... I can't see you at all. Can you come up? You too. These two are here? Yeah, I can't see you. Come up a little bit. There we go. All right, can everybody see me? Because otherwise, I can't, you'll not be in the picture. Okay, I can't, I can't see you either. You three in the back, need to come up a little bit? I'm sorry, I can't see your face. All right? Look for me. Ready? Ready? One more. I need you. Hold it, I can't see your face. Ready? Miss your faces. Thank you.
All right, gang. Go do your homework. Very good. They're trying to read what's on the back of their shirts. Don't let what you cannot do interfere with. Yeah, okay, what you can do. Very good. Keith, you won't see these kids.
Good group of kids. Good group of kids you got there.
Yeah, they're a good group. All right, and the proclamation, it says, "Whereas social security remains the bedrock of retirement income for the great majority of the people in the United States," including Jerry and I. "...but was never intended by Congress to be the sole source of retirement income for families. And whereas all workers, including public and private sector employees, employees of tax-exempt organizations, and self-employed individuals can benefit from increased awareness of the need to develop personal budgets and financial plans, including retirement-saving strategies, and to take advantage of the availability of tax-preferred savings vehicles to assist them in saving for retirement. And whereas the financial literacy is an important factor in the United States workers' understanding the true need to save for retirement. And whereas saving for one's retirement is a key component to overall financial health and security during those retirement years, and the importance of financial literacy in planning one's retirement must be advocated. And whereas many employees have available to them through their employer's access to defined benefit and defined contribution plans to assist them in preparing for retirement, yet many of them may not be taking advantage of such plans at all, or to the full extent allowed by such plans as prescribed by federal law. Now, therefore, I all in Owen, on behalf of the council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim the week of October 21st, 2012 to October the 27th, 2012, Save for Retirement Week in Missouri City, and urge all of our citizens to seriously evaluate their plan for retirement this week." Plan for retirement. All right. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. I did mention at the last meeting that the Texas Comptroller had awarded the city what they call their Leadership Goal Circle Award, and so we now have this nice certificate that Wes, come up here, and I'll just read it. It says, "The Texas Comptroller Leadership Circle Goal Member awarded to the City of Missouri City for setting the bar for financial transparency and opening your books to the public. The Texas Comptroller's Leadership Circle Program recognizes local governments across Texas that are striving to meet a high financial transparency online. For providing citizens with a clear, consistent picture of spending and sharing information in a user-friendly format, you are setting a strong example for other government entities to follow," and is signed by the State Comptroller, Susan Combs. So I'll present that to my fellow, our guidance directors.
And I just wanna add that this is the second year that we've received this award, and it's mainly due to the efforts of our accounting manager, Kathy Hutton.
All right. Item four, or public comments, is an opportunity for anyone to address council. I did not have anyone sign up tonight. Is anybody coming forward? Item five, or staff reports. Item 5A is a presentation on the pavement, maintenance, and management program. You have this, Scott?
Very good, council, we'd like to take this opportunity to talk about our pavement, management, and maintenance program, which we shortened to PMMP because it's just a lot to say, on that. And this is the way that city staff rates these streets and how we prioritize street repairs on that. The original concept of the pavement, management, and maintenance program, while it was in some manner and form formula before, was really driven by Gatsby 34, the Government Accounting Standards Board, Number 34 Rule. And with the goal of preservation, preventive maintenance, extending the life of our infrastructure, extend the taxpayer dollars, and to save time and money. It also keeps us from making guesses on where we should allocate resources, but gives us a structured approach to do so. Basically, the Government Accounting Standards Board program required government entities develop a pavement management system and track the information on how we spend our dollars. It boils down to rating streets with an overall condition rating. Theoretically, a perfect street, brand-new, just accepted into our inventory, would be a 100 on that, and no street would be a zero on that. The purpose is to place a value on our infrastructure, and in 2003, council adopted a formal program with condition ratings for streets, and we'll go into that. The council-approved program states that the city will maintain at least eighty-five percent of our streets at a minimum overall condition rating on a scale of zero to 100 as listed below. A major arterial, this would be a roadway such as Cartwright Road between FM 1092 and Dulles, which is a city street, Cartwright Road on the other side is a Tex- dot street, and that's an important point to recognize. Most of the city's major thoroughfares, whether it's Texas Parkway, Cartwright, between Texas Parkway and Murphy. Murphy itself, Highway 6, Highway 90 are not city-owned and maintained streets, but they're maintained by the Texas Department of Transportation on that. But we'll maintain major arterials at a minimum rating of 70 for eighty-five percent of them, minor arterials, 70 again, major collectors at 65, minor collectors at 65, cul-de-sacs and residential at 60 on this zero to 100 rating. Good examples, residential streets, where driveway front and side, or either a cul-de-sac or residential, in most cases, though we do have some residential on minor collectors. For example, La Quinta, south of the new city center, on that. Major collectors would be roadways such as Brightwater Boulevard on that. This is a very illustrative graph, and basically, if you take a look on the right in the graph, for every $1 spent in an earlier stage in the condition rating of the street, we'll save $4 to $5 at a later stage in the street. What it means is preventive maintenance is very, very important to maintaining the life of our infrastructure. That's crack sealing, that's crack routing, that's small pothole-type repairs, that's spall joint repairs, those type of items. By having a defined, structured program, we find that it's less costly than rebuilding streets every fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, and we save $4 to $5 for every dollar spent. Now, the mechanics of it. What we do is we take, we have our entire street network in the city broke into street roadway segments. And a roadway segment is basically from the center line of one intersection to the center line of another intersection on a street. We take a look at the length, width, and area in that segment, the type of pavement, because different types of pavement, asphalt, concrete, and we do have portions, small portions of some gravel roads and that that are public streets. Each type of pavement has different type of distresses in them. For example, asphalt is subject to alligator cracking, where you don't see that type of cracking on concrete streets. We take a look at the rank, as we classified earlier, arterial, collector, residential, and cul-de-sac. We take a look at the route, basically the traffic demand on it, the construction date and history, and we evaluate these things. Normally, we'll do one-third of a street of the city streets, lane miles, every year. The last year, because of the drought, council said with the drought coming on, we'll wait another year, get the impact of the drought, because we knew that we're gonna have a severe impact on our street system out there. But you rate from zero to 100 based upon this collection of distresses in the street. We don't just make up the criteria for the rating. We base our criteria on the American Society of Testing Materials rating criteria on that. It is an objective criteria. We look at the different types of distresses in the street, the severity of those distresses, for example, the number of cracks per linear foot, the number of cracks per certain area. And then we quality control and quality assurance those, the data collected, to come up with the ratings. We contract out, as part of our CIP program, the annual ratings on the street. They are performed by a professional engineer who specializes in this type of data collection. We upload this into our cartograph pavement management system, and we also, in the last year, have been able to catch digital right-of-way images about every fifty feet along every roadway, much like the Google street image that you would see. If we have a pavement condition index of 85 and above, normally, that's normal joint cleaning and sealing, minor patching. For example, some of these streets might have a spall joint or something to that effect. But normally, you won't see major repairs on this type of street. It's in very good shape. Between 70 and 84, it's a little more intensive on our maintenance. These are typical repairs would be potholes, cracked fields, again, spall joints, street raising, you know, we might have a lowered area of the street that creates a bird bath against the curb. Fifty to 69 is when a street becomes a candidate more for rehabilitation. This could be a large removal and replacement of entire segments of panels of pavement. This could be a mill and resurfage on an asphalt street. It can be an overlay on an asphalt street, or it could be slab maintenance on a bridge approach. But generally, this is the type of work that you'll see in a pavement condition index of 50 to 69. Less than 50 is where it drops into the candidate for reconstruction on that. This could be a partial to complete removal or replacement of the pavement. This could be a partial to complete removal or replacement of the pavement segment, and this would normally include subgrade stabilization and repair. A lot of the older areas of the city are not constructed on stabilized subgrades, stuff that was 30, 40 years ago, different set of construction standards in place at the time, and we end up with a lot of pavement repair and replacement on that type of material. So what we end up with is a decision tool that staff utilizes to allocate our resources on that. This generally is a three-to-five-year repair plan, sometimes it's longer, depending on the severity. For example, if we're doing a complete removal construction, we may have to wait until bond funds are available for that type of work. McLean Boulevard is a good example on that. It was built in 64, and we did a lot of patching, a lot of mending, until bond funds were available, but that street was ultimately completely removed and replaced on that. We do take a look at all the constraints that we have: funding, weather coming up. For example, last year, we did more patching than reconstruction in the drought on that, material costs, and traffic patterns on that. A good example would be Watts Plantation. Watts Plantation was reconstructed a few years ago. With the new toll road extension coming in, we expect that to shift traffic patterns, so we may sometimes, on a situation like that, look and see how the traffic patterns change before we decide how we're going to allocate the resources on something to that nature. There always is a do-nothing, you know, if there's, the street's in really good shape, our resources may be better allocated to a street in less, in a more severe maintenance condition out there. We do spend most of our street maintenance on contract hire type work. We do maintain staff in-house to do removal and replacement and repairs, but the vast majority, probably 2/3 of the funding, goes to contract hire for streets, and also for streets materials on that. And our CIP budget and our metro money is where we are spending about $600,000 on our pavement, management, and maintenance program. This year, we're doing something that we have not done in the past: we are including sidewalks in our PMMP program. Until 2007, we, the city, did not have the responsibility for the majority of sidewalks in the city. It's from 2007 until recently, what we did was allocate funds and spent as requests for service came in. This year, we're including sidewalk analysis in our PMMP, and you'll see two different contracts coming forward to council, one for the street analysis, one for the sidewalk analysis. We believe it's a better use of contract or taxpayer money to spend that in two different contracts. We also get a lot of in-kind services from Fort Bend County, mainly on our asphalt streets, though they have allocated resources to assist us on some concrete street repairs that were larger than we could do in-house. Just to give you an example of department expenditures on street maintenance in this program, 2012, it would split about $387,000 in Fort Bend County. That was a lot of asphalt reconstruction we did in that year, $166,000 in contractor hire, and in-house about $35,000. This year, since we did a lot of asphalt in the previous year, we're mainly going to be spending money in contractor and in-house type work. And you can see the cost per square foot is different in those. We're not paying overhead and profit when we're doing in-house work. So why do we use pavement, management, and maintenance system out there? It's a plan that can be explained, and it's objectively-based rather than subjectively-based. We have the documentation to support our decision-making on that. We do do re-inspections after a new street is reconstructed. We will do a PMMP rating on that, and it provides accountability and responsible spending for the citizens of Missouri City on that. And I'm here to answer any questions that council may have.
Good job.
Any questions?
Thank you all for your time.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, Consent Agenda. You wanted to remove?
Yeah, I want to remove F.
Do you have a motion to approve A through E? Is it F that's the one you want to remove?
Yes.
Councilman Emery made the motion. Councilman Marshall made the second to approve 6A, B, C, D, and E. All those in favor, motion carries. Then we'll consider item 6F. We consider authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement between Fort Bend County and the cities of Rosenberg, Stafford, Sugar Land, and Missouri City relating to the Fort Bend County pet mega adoption event. Yes, sir?
Yes, Scott, and I don't have any problems with, you know, the participation in this. I just had several questions that I would hope that you could help me with. First of all, it indicates that we've got a minimum of two animals that we would support and offer for adoption at the event. How did we arrive at the number of two?
Sure. Each of the cities got together and came up with a criteria list to consider animal an adoptable animal for this event. And basically, the animal has to be kept for 30 days by the agency. This provide health, make sure that they don't have any long-term impacts. The animal has to be vaccinated, has to be spayed and neutered, microchipped, and that. And so based upon when this program came about, these were the animals that we have available in the shelter at this time on that. But we have, the animals have to meet the criteria as established for the event.
Do we have any opportunity for more than two, or are we pretty much tied to that number?
That's all we have in the shelter at this time on that, yes. We might have a couple that are coming off of quarantine that we could add to it, but we still have to see the results of the quarantine.
The 30-day waiting deal is the key, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the key to it.
Okay. The other, I didn't see any provision for cats.
There, this is an event that cats can participate in. We just don't have any in the shelter at this time. The recent cats that we have obtained have been feral cats, and they're not really good candidates for adoption. If we did have cats, we would bring them to the event. With the new shelter that is coming online in the next few months, we do have a larger ability to retain cats than we had in the previous one, so we should see that increase in the next event.
And the reason I ask that is, we have a Ike survivor kitten that we acquired, and my wife, you know, told me I had better check it out, why we don't have cats included in the program.
We should be able to increase that. Right now, our existing shelter is really set up for canines more than cats. The cats are kept in events in more of a cage-type environment, a carrier-type environment. And like I said, most of the cats that we have adopted have been feral, have acquired have been feral cats and aren't good candidates for their adoption.
But if Linda likes him, Ramesh, an email today said he had six kittens.
Did he have six?
Right here in Missouri City.
Ramesh still has six.
Yeah.
How is the $40 fee determined? As far as the adoption fee, was that?
The $40 fee was determined to cover the cost of the facility and renting the event and the overhead to hold the event. Just to give you some, oh, and there's a $20 fee for seniors. It does go down for seniors on that. But it's mainly was set up by the participants in the event to cover the cost of holding the event and nothing else, and it barely covers that cost on that. Just giving you an example, for example, City of Houston, an adoption fee for the City of Houston, unless you catch them on one of the half-off specials, is $70 on that, and a lot of pet stores run in the $70 to $100 range on that.
And I would think at $40 or $20, it's not an impediment.
No, last year, within minutes of us getting there, we adopted all the animals that we had, less than an hour.
Okay. Okay. I guess the last thing that, and it really, I think you touched on a little bit, is, I just wanted to make sure that we go on record that once we put our new shelter in operation, that we'll be looking at our retention period, so we may be able to retain animals longer than we normally do now, so it'll give people opportunity to either find their pets or up for adoption, so.
Sure, and our animal control offices do have that on their list to do. You are correct, we will be reviewing the retention schedule, and just to let you know, we're currently required to hold all stray animals a minimum of 72 hours. Animals with a collar and tag, under today's conditions, which we're going to be looking at, are held a minimum of six days on that. And most adoptable animals, you know, and there are criteria for good adoptable animals, are even held longer than that on average now. We're actually getting close to two weeks on adoptable animals on today's criteria, with today's room that we're limited to. And a couple other criteria, for the past three years, we've been working really hard with rescue groups on animals, and this is both local and even out-of-state rescue groups. We currently on pace to have about 150 animals placed with rescue groups this year alone. We have five dogs in the shelter today that have been there at least two weeks each, and we are going to look at increasing our hold time for adoptable animals with the new shelters, since we'll have more room.
Great.
And by the way, the rescue, the rescue groups charge $350 or $450 per pet.
That's great.
Except we've already neutered and spayed.
Yeah. Thanks for the information. I would ask that I make a motion to approve the item 6F.
All right. Councilman Emery made the motion. Councilman Marshall made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item seven, or Public Hearings and Related Actions. 7A1 is a zoning public hearing and ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending PD Plan Development District Number 76, describing the 7.42 acre tract of land within PD Plan Development District Number 76, regulating the development and use of property within such PD Plan Development District, referencing the site plan, providing for certain construction according to said plan, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, Texas, as adopted by Ordinance Number 0811. Adopted on January 19, 1981, is amended, repealing Ordinance Number 0949, adopted on November 16, 2009, and all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
And this is the second and final reading, and I know there was lengthy discussion at the last meeting, so any changes since then?
The applicants have gone ahead and met staff's recommendation and the, what was approved last time by council at the first reading, so they have removed the banners and the painted mural from the wall. So the ordinance that's before you all tonight is essentially what was voted on at the first council hearing.
And they're comfortable with that?
Yes, the applicants are.
They're here?
They're here.
You got rid of the dog.
He'll be around. He'll be around.
I like the dog.
Well, you know, we talked, one time, maybe you could put the dog pictures in the window.
Yeah.
And there's still some, you know, discussion, if they may do some things that are within the current ordinance that would allow for.
Figure it out.
Yeah. I think the key is that as long as we stay as close to the, our ordinance requirements, you know, the better off we are.
You'll be successful. That's what you're concerned about, so. The sooner you get it open, the sooner people start eating.
Move it, though. Second. So the signs were moved, the flags were reduced to three, or were they removed completely?
Correct. There's just three now that are located on the front elevation.
Let me make a comment. I would hope that somehow within, with those three flags, that there's some kind of a maintenance program. The one thing we really don't want to see, or, because I think we're not talking about, you know, flags on flagpoles, we're talking about flags that, you know, sit on top of the, are banners. So, you know, I would hope that we could see some kind of a maintenance program that, to replace those, so they don't become, you know, an eyesore, you know, after six, eight months.
Can we go through the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion by Councilman Smith.
We're discussing.
He's discussing. He's right.
No second?
Yeah.
That's my question. That's okay.
To, just for a question real quick, yeah, we don't want them worn or either, I mean, it looks bad on our business too, so we replace them if they get torn or start to fade, et cetera, so it's.
Do you have a program?
It's according to us too. I can, I can talk to our facility management people and see if they have a system in place to, you know, send to Travis. But, yeah, that's, we don't want to see it looking disrepair either, so.
And as part of the current ordinance, the new sign ordinance does require, and the past one did as well, that signs be flown in accordance with general flag etiquette. So they would be required to keep them in good shape.
Very good. Do you have something?
Well, you know, since I'm going to vote against this, and not against the business, I want to make sure I clarify that, but when somebody tells me that all of their stores look like that, and I know for a fact that's not the case, and when I read minutes and things from meetings, and it feels like Missouri City is the bad guy for not letting all of these signs, when I hear that some of the stores don't look like this store because other cities didn't permit all of their signage, you know, as I said last time, I wasn't going to vote for this, and I just want to be consistent to my word, and I've looked at stores from Oklahoma to Dallas to South Carolina, and a lot of them don't even look like each other. And so I'm not going to vote for it. But I do want the business to come and be successful.
Very good. Any other discussion? We'll vote, all those in favor. Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Good luck to you.
When are you going to start?
December 10.
Huh?
December 10.
When are you going to start construction?
February 11.
And what's the construction period?
Uh, 90 days. Oh, 140 days.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, 7A2.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, granting a specific use permit, authorizing the use of a 4,800 square foot facility on a 6.67 acre tract of land in the City of Missouri City as a specific use places of assembly depicting said 4,800 square foot facility, providing limitations, restrictions, and conditions on such specific use. Amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City as adopted by Ordinance Number 0811, adopted on January 19, 1981, is amended. Repealing Ordinance Number 0938, adopted on October 19, 2009, and all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
The second time's not near as scary as the first. I see her back there. She's so nervous. She's hide, she goes, please, I don't want to come up there, I don't want to come up there. Come on up. Yeah. Is that for anything changed?
There are no changes to the ordinance, but as requested, the applicant did provide a list of certifications and affiliations, and so that was included.
And she's got them all in that envelope right there, I'm sure.
Move approval.
Second.
I did provide the certifications, past certifications, also the students that were awarded certifications for Mr. Dunn Smith. And I just want to let you know that I am truly, truly excited about placing this business. I believe that it's going to be very successful, and I do appreciate all of you and your efforts to make this city wonderful. I want to do the same thing, and I want to be successful and be a good business provider, business vendor for everyone.
Again, what will your business do?
It's a allied health, post-secondary allied health school.
So you'll be training students to do, do what?
Medical certifications.
Especially for the others?
Here we go. We're going to try very hard to get you a bed there.
Please do.
We're going to try our best to get you a bed there, just for Dunn Smith.
He's on a wheeling over to the rec center to get exercise.
With his name on it.
He needs, he needs somebody who knows how to do an intimacy.
I'm going to definitely have to give someone personal for that.
Oh, goodness, that's bad.
You're wrong for that.
Yeah, you opened yourself up for that senior citizen.
Yeah. Well, I think we all expressed great hope that you'll be real successful, because that's an area where, you know, that center there is one where we really need some successful businesses in, so.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Very good.
Good luck.
Thank you. All right, there was a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries. See, it wasn't that bad.
Not sure.
That's over now, now it's your job to go do the rest.
Not sure, son.
Marshall and Emery. All right, item 7B, or Public Hearings and Related Actions. 7B1.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the City of Missouri City to participate in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter 2303, Texas Government Code, providing tax incentives designating liaison for communication with interested parties, nominating Magre Bottling LLC to the Office of the Governor, Economic Development, and Tourism through the Texas Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
And this is the second and final reading of this. Is there a motion?
Move approval of this enterprise project.
Councilman Marshall made the, who made the second? Councilman Emery? And a motion is second. And a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Now we'll vote, all those in favor. Motion carries. Item seven B, two.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, changing the boundaries of the city of Missouri City by the disannexation of 0.687 tract, acre tract of land east of Big Trail Court, west of Beast Passage, and south of Sienna Ranch Road, repealing other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing perseverance.
And this also is the second and final, that's your motion, Councilman Smith? Or second?
Second.
Who made the second? Councilman Allen K.
I'm just looking at this pile that he's calling.
I know. Got a motion and a second, is there any?
Exactly.
All for, all for a little piece of land, it's smaller than this room.
6.8 acres.
Yeah, yeah, it's about the size of this room. All those in favor? Motion carries. And the paper costs more than the tract did. Right? Yeah, you know, you got, it's all those wheres and therefor's and, all right, item eight are appointments that are none, item nine are authorizations. Item nine A is to consider authorizing a contract amendment with AIA engineers for engineering design services for Texas Parkway intersection signal improvements.
Move to that.
All right, Mr. Smith made the motion. Councilman Marshall made the second. Is there discussion?
Yeah, what is that gonna do? I mean, I'm already hearing comments about 2234, so if we're gonna do something that will say what it is.
I'm sorry, asking specifically about 2234, um, the section south?
Yeah.
Um, their, Tech Dot has plans to, um, their design is, is already completed for them to come through and design Texas Parkway from Cartwright all the way to Fort Bend Tollway. They're already complete, so they are going to let the contract in June of next year. So it will be to widen and also to have, um, some medians.
So it's gonna get better?
Um, hopefully that will help with mobility.
The widening will, yeah.
Well, we need to make the connection. Are those barge ditches on both sides, or are we gonna?
In the, uh, super elevated curve, the section between Turtle Creek and, uh, Cartwright, they're gonna move curb and gutter because of the limited right-of-way there, but the rest of it probably will remain as barge ditch.
Which is a very good move. I'm sure the merchants are gonna enjoy that, yeah, that decision.
Right, and, and they changed some of that limited, that right-of-way acquisition, 'cause originally they were designing for a six-lane road, but only gonna build a four, and they're now designing and building a four on that. And this specific amendment to the AIA, when we're going through on our intersection improvements contract, we're gonna need some additional corner clips, uh, for example, Court Road and Texas Parkway will need some corner clips to be able to locate the new signal poles out at a further, uh, location. And Tech Dot is requiring full right-of-way mapping, uh, for that, and so this is to accommodate Tech Dot's right-of-way mapping requirement on that.
You got the answer.
Mayor, can we take a, a little liberty and talk about just the medians that's being constructed right now and, and how it's proven aggressive?
Yeah.
Scott?
Um, yeah, um, so the contractor, um, the, the traffic control plan for the median showed that we would work in 2,500, um, linear sections and close down our, you know, that section of the roadway so they could go ahead and form medians and then move to next section. Um, we've had a little bit of discussion with Tech Slot on that, and we've been modifying our traffic control plan per each section. Obviously, some areas of the roadway have more traffic than others, and so we've been going back and forth, trying to partner, you know, make sure that our partnerships and relationships are good with Tech Slot so that if we need something, we can get a, you know, get on the phone and call them and tell them, hey, guys, it's not working. So that's, um, typically what we're doing. Right now, we have a section from, um, from Court to, um, they will, tomorrow they'll go from Court to Independence and shut down that section, since I'm sure you guys, as you traveled today, from Court to Ma, to Grand Park is what we had planned, but it's not working. So we're gonna cut it to Independence, work on that section, and then we'll keep moving north in sections like that.
But the, but the, the bottom line decisions for Texas Parkway in terms of traffic patterns, turning and everything, that's decided by Tech Dot?
Yes, the, the median opening.
Everybody was on TV.
Ultimately decided by Tech Dot. And just to give counsel what the ultimate completed project will be on that, would be raised esplanade medians from Third Street, right south, Highway 90, where the median currently stops, to Cartwright Road on that, where you see the completed section right now. It's any place that's 10-foot or greater in width will be replaced and, and have sod and grass in it. We all have, are getting landscape sleeves installed between the medians as part of it for future possible landscaping, which is currently unfunded, uh, right now. Uh, but there will be that opportunity to do that. If 10 feet or less, it's gonna be the colored stamped asphalt, just like on Highway 6, right, Kristen?
Um, that has not, I'm not aware of that. I need to go back and check that.
But it will be, it will be a pavement surface, and we'll, we'll verify what it is on that. Um, but it will be a pavement surface because you can't grow vegetation and stuff that small. Yes, Councilmember?
Yeah, I just wanna make a question. When we were talking about those medians and those pavements on Highway 6, I mean, at that time that you talked about that, something that we're doing, so I would just hope that if we can keep that consistency so it shows us that we're in Missouri City, because I don't see that exact one anywhere else.
Uh, um, you mean the colored, the, at the pavement, or you mean the landscape?
Yeah, I remember having the same discussion about 10-foot or less won't, would get the pavement, and, and 10-foot or higher would get the, uh, grass.
Which is the same concept that was used on Highway 6. You're correct on that.
It looks like you confirmed it's right.
Yeah, it is, it is the colored stamped asphalt.
And the only reason I'm asking, otherwise we would look like different stamp everywhere.
So Valerie just confirmed it is the color stamped asphalt on the 10-foot or less, just like on Highway 6.
Would we ever consider the light standards in the esplanades?
Since they, in the areas that are 10-foot or greater, and since there would be a raised median, then that would be something that would be allowable, provided we use breakaway bases, which is the standard by Tech Dot on, on the roadway, yes, for this section. Tech Dot has different landscaping criteria depending upon the speed limit of the road and 45 miles an hour is the break point where you switch to the ability above 45, you can't use hardwood trees and those type of things in, uh, that speed zone. We could do that on Texas Parkway. You'll see some of the developers, for example, Sienna on Highway 6 has installed, uh, more of the soft trees, the dogwoods and the grape myrtles and those type of things on Highway 6, and that's their standard for stuff 45 and greater on that.
If you put light poles in it, would we have, would we have the electrical?
You would have to run electrical.
Would we have to run those?
Actually, when we put the sleeves in, we design for both electrical and irrigation if necessary.
Scott, I do hope that we will, uh, consider, and I spoke to the city manager about this, is somehow put monument signs, the Missouri City Monument signs to, uh, as well. I don't know how, if that fits within this present plan, but it certainly will add some consistency. We got it on Gessner all the way to 98. We should just continue it.
In this, uh, medians contract, which was modified as part of this action, uh, we are looking at not just monument signs at Cartwright and Texas Parkway and all, but also looking at, uh, plantings and, and those type of things as being a component of that. Uh, Tech Dot's, I believe it's called the Green Ribbon Program, allocates a small percentage, and it's like one-half of 1% of the construction funding towards aesthetic improvements on that, and there may be the opportunity to partner and, and up that as part of it.
Yeah, and so, one, one of the reasons you got, you know, you're asking about plantings, one of the reasons we couldn't include it in this, in the medians project is because it wasn't enough funding. It was only five, six grand, so that's why we ended up with grass. But we are looking to come back in the future after intersections are in, um, well, actually, um, January timeframe to get some plantings in after Tech Dot is complete, so that we can do it on our own and that it's not so much.
Grass looks good.
But the, but, but you, when you say this funding, whether it's for, whether it's for identification signs or what, uh, this funding is coming from somewhere else.
This is an 80.
It's not coming from Missouri City.
This is an 80/20 funding source, 20% by the city of Missouri City, 80% by the federal government through HAC.
And I, and I think it's very important, I don't want people to think we got money in our budgets to do this with, not even this year, other than what's been funded.
That is correct.
Is there any resurfacing of, of the, the roadway itself?
Not as part of this project, though we have been in contact with Tech Dot. Sharon Valiant has to report, for example, near Fifth Street heading southbound on Texas Parkway, there's a, a low area there, and we have reported those type of things. The local districts in a little bit of a transition as the area engineer that been here for 10 years moved to downtown, and they have an interim right now. So we are staying on them to report these, uh, things like the Fifth Street, uh, subsidence on that outside lane there.
Let me ask the same question I asked before. Is it, um, gonna be barge ditches, or are they gonna, at, at any point in time, are, is it gonna be, uh, gutter and curbs anywhere?
I'll answer that as saying yes, at any point in time on that. The city's traffic management plan does call for the need to expand both 2234 and 1092 to six lanes. However, that is a very, very expensive project, 'cause it's a Tech Dot roadway, gotta be built to Tech Dot standards. When we put the sidewalks in and did the drainage improvements on Texas Parkway, we did that with the ability to not remove any of that stuff in the future when it gets expanded to six lanes. Of course, it would be cheaper to go to, stay with an open ditch concept, but we may not have the right-of-way to do that on that. We're looking at a project of, in the neighborhood of 20 million, uh, to convert it to six lanes. Uh, so right now, none of that funding is allocated either in the city or at Tech Dot. But, for example, with the intersection improvements, when we move the signal poles out, we will do that, so we won't have to be removed if it does go to six lanes in the future on that. Uh, but it is a identified need by the city, and it's just a funding issue between Tech Dot and the city and everybody else. In all honesty, Texas Parkway is not high on their list of, uh, priority funding right now.
And looking at the, I guess, the current layout of where the medians are, it appears that you're not going to be able to turn left off of Texas Parkway into the post office, is that right? Or are you gonna be able to turn right, I mean, left, coming out of the post office on the Texas Parkway?
The post office was modified on the plan set on that to allow a left-turn movement on that.
Yeah, they munked out the day. They munked out the day.
Those were one of our biggest arguments.
What about when you exit it? You still gonna have to go?
It's just.
The left end. The only opening you're gonna see that will have full access, and what I mean by full access is someone that can come out and take a left and a right at an intersection, um, would be Greendale. That's the only full opening we have.
And Mimosa.
Beside, yes, and Mimosa, besides the, the intersections that have signals.
But they did allow a slip-left into the post office heading northbound, uh, on that.
Greendale is.
Is it requiring reversal of the parking?
Gre, Greendale is.
No, in fact, if you go down there, you see where they drew it out.
Well, Green is.
How about the exit? Leave at that end. Are you gonna be able to turn left back on Texas Parkway?
Mimosa's, yes, sir.
Turn left and right either way.
You can go full, it's a full-access intersection. I looked at that today.
All right, let me go back to the post office. Wait, I, what you're, you're saying is there is an opening going north on Texas Parkway to allow you to turn left into that entrance that's there today?
Yes.
If you drive through that and exit the other end, are you gonna be able to turn left back on the Texas Parkway? See, that's right, Jerry, you're not. You gotta go to the intersection and go back.
That's correct.
Yeah, the only way it was gonna be able to do a left and left was to reverse the parking.
Okay. Well, I think people can live with that as long as they're able to turn left into, into the post office, and not have to go all the way to the intersection and U-turn. Okay.
Yeah, and it seems like they're going somewhere on that.
I'm curious, how did that work out with Mimosa, when it's that close to Buffalo Run?
That one is, is a little further. It, uh, it's about almost 500 feet from, uh, Buffalo Run signal, but the other important thing about Mimosa that's different than, uh, the Quell Trace Greendale subdivision is they only have one entrance and exit for their entire subdivision, where the other one did have multiple entrances and exits, two of them. So they did allow for a right-in, right-out at Quell Trace and a full-service intersection at Greendale. Uh, Kristen also worked with the fire department and Tech Dot to, and have a mountable curb installed on the Greendale, so the fire truck could cross the curb and not impact response time.
For Quell Trace.
For Quell Trace.
For Quell Trace. So they had access across the street.
And what's the estimated completion date on this project?
The contract shows seven months. Um, it looks like we're moving a little fast, so hopefully it will be half the time, hopefully three and a half months, hopefully five months, but it doesn't look like they're gonna take the full seven months.
And just for council's information, we believe the, the speed of construction is gonna be directly related to the amount of inconvenience for traffic. By allowing the contractor to work longer periods of time, that'll shorten, you know, the overall construction time versus saying you can only work from 9 to 3, which gives them only five hours of working time in a day. So we're trying to balance, uh, the traffic congestion and the traffic safety issues with the speed of construction. For example, we were out there, Kristen was out there this afternoon, and we told Tech Dot the current plan due to the frequency of signals is gonna have to be modified on what they had on, we're putting in line today, uh, on that. And we do have, uh, our signal group is, we had all three people this evening working on signals, maintaining green time, and manually overriding signals out there to clear up the congestion as quickly as possible today. It, it's not gonna be painless, and we're gonna try and balance speed of construction versus congestion and safety issues to maintain, get, get the contract in as quickly as possible. But the outside limit should be seven months.
Scott, I've got two questions. Number one is, did you consider detouring, you know, when commuting going to Cartwright, coming, you know, going south? That's one question.
We, we did consider detours, and it, it seems like a lot of residents have decided Columbia Blue is a good detour on that. Uh, they also have decided this evening, a lot of parking lots were good detours as well on that. But, uh, most of the drivers are known, know the area out here, so they have, are tending to find their own routes out there, but we are looking at the possibility of maybe adding detour signs. Uh, it's gonna be a balancing act on that.
Well, and one thing too that we have been doing, we have been trying to add the DMS signs, and when we know that we're gonna move south or north, you know, we're gonna move a little further, we have been putting the, the DMS signs out to say, all right, guys, expect it here in the next, you know, however long. So we are trying to coordinate with residents and give them a heads-up with moving our DMS signs as the project moves.
We also will be providing to the businesses and the HOAs along there a monthly update on construction status. This is what's happened, this is what you can expect to see in the next month, and this is what remains on the contract.
I keep forgetting the name of the street right next, in Quell Green, right next to the auto parts store.
Uh, Greendale.
Turning right and left, are you gonna keep an eye on that as far as?
Yes, sir.
Accidents and?
Oh, yes, sir.
Traffic and stuff, yeah.
We will. And what we'll do is, we'll end up doing a, a travel time, a runtime. We have data from prior to medians. We'll end up doing a travel time survey after the medians are in and traffic has adjusted, and we'll provide that information to council on that.
Great.
So when Don has his Juneteenth parade, he's gonna be on one side of Texas Parkway. Do you allow, and when we've got Texas Parkway closed, do you allow people to come on to the closed side?
We just split this parade up. We'll have one on one side.
Really? I mean, do you allow that?
It's a possibility, yes, to do a contraflow on one side.
Well, when we did, but...
No, no, no. No, no, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking that when his parade is on, now, it used to go down the middle of the street and people were equal to either side. Now, that's going to be restricted to one side. Are you allowing the general public to come on to the closed section of Texas Parkway to be closer to the parade?
That's one thing that we'll have to work with TechDOT on the traffic control plan and see if we could get. I can't commit to that right now because it'll be ultimately TechDOT's decision on whether the whole road would have to be shut down or...
It puts them a long way from your parade, Don, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I just didn't want to deal with it right now.
You know, Cartwright's not a big issue because it's not near as wide as...
We can definitely look at that when we submit our next traffic control plan for Juneteenth and see if that's a possibility.
Okay. Looking at the entrance, Don. Can't throw beads that far. Right, that's about bigger candy bars, the size of a rock. All right, there was a motion by Councilman Smith and a second by Councilman Marshall. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item 9B is consider authorizing any action on the contract for fines and fees collection services. Assume this went to Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommend approval on, the council would consider approving this contract based on the fact that the company did meet the performance standards. And if you want to go over those.
That's your second.
Right, for that, for the one year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is my second.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to let you know that Limebarger did meet their goals with the court collections. And they went, they were at 41 percent where the projected rate was 25 percent. With the false alarm fees, it was 5.9 percent when, where the requested was 10 percent. But, Limebarger only had cases for four months, and it takes a year to two years to reach that cycle where you can get a true meaning of what the collection rate is. And so, we feel like they've done a really great job for the collection of fines and fees.
Did we set the bar too low?
No.
Richard's squirming back there. I'm not sure.
Well, no, I mean, we had a lengthy discussion about that when that came up, that that was a starting point. It's a valid point. Is it, I mean, they're meeting it, exceeding it at 41 percent. Is 25 too low?
I don't think 20, well, you know, as a matter of fact...
But, it's a standard. I don't...
Last year, it was, last year, it was 39 percent.
Right.
So, 40 percent is a great rate for collection. I think the average collection, I think actually, the actually, the collection rate is 18. Is that correct? That 18 is the normal collection rate?
And that's what I'm asking. Is that the market, 18 is the market, and so, we were above the market?
Way above, way above.
You know, the other side to that is the incentive for the collection group is to collect as much as they can. If they collect nothing, they get nothing. And so, even though we have the performance standard out there, whether we make it 40 percent, we hope they collect 100 percent, you know, what they're given. And...
That goes for us, too, though.
Yeah.
If they don't collect, then we don't get anything.
That's right. That's right. And their fee is in that, that collection rate is attached to whatever they're ours, right?
The defendant pays the 30 percent. It doesn't come from the city.
Now that they have more time with the, with the extension of this contract, do you, so 10 percent, are you going to project more than 10 percent for the next year?
On their alarm?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that standard?
Or is that, is that what we should be expecting?
No, what we kind of looked at was is that...
I really would like for them to answer that, Jerry.
Well, you know, I'm kind of them, too, when I'm on the committee. Because I just want to share with you the fact that they only had those for like, what, four or five months? And they collected 5.9 percent. So, they didn't have it for the whole year.
Let me rephrase my question to the gentleman. Now that you have more than four or five months, do, are we to anticipate more than 10 percent at this point? Or is that the standard that you think?
I think 10 percent is the standard that you should look for us to achieve within that one-year timeframe that we've been provided for in the contract.
And that's what's in our contract now, is 10 percent.
10 percent.
No, it's 25. 25, but we're not correct that.
We're talking about two different pieces.
No, we're talking about the...
25 on one piece and it's 5 on the other. There's two different, right?
No, the alarm is 25.
It's a typo. It's 10 percent.
It's 25 percent for court, 10 percent for false alarm.
Well, alarms, that's what I'm talking about, alarms. So...
Hey, I'm just reading it. Is it 25 percent?
I know, I know, but it was a mistake.
Well, I knew there were two different rates. I mean, 25 is on the, on the tax rate, and it's 10 percent on the fines and fees.
Right.
And the question that Don was asking is the same question I ask about the tax. Is 10 percent common? And is that the standard? You said 18 was standard on taxes. What is standard, or court? What is standard on the fines and fees?
The 10 percent that we projected in the contract.
Okay. So, that is our performance measurement when we have a full period of time to measure.
Yes.
Richard, do you work towards just contracts, or do you try to exceed those things every now and then?
Oh, we always try to exceed those. Yeah, there's no question about it. Ed, I just say, somewhere in our material, I know that we must have a typo.
You have Exhibit A twice, and where Exhibit B should be, Exhibit A is what you have. And it's the 10 percent that has been mentioned several times that should be there instead of the 25 percent that's listed.
Okay.
Though what's listed there, as far as the note about the false alarm collection at 5.5 percent, 5.59 percent is correct.
Yes.
It's just the percentage that it's compared to should be 10 percent, not 25.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
And to clarify, the existing contract is correct, just the supplementary information was incorrect.
Okay. Any other questions? There was a motion by Council, by Mayor Pro Tem White and a second by Councilman Ellen Cat. All those in favor? Motion carries. Out of 10 ordinances, thank you, Richard. 10A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the crediting of updated service credits with the Texas Municipal Retirement System for certain City of Missouri City employees who have membership in such system, providing for increased annuities for certain City of Missouri City retirees and beneficiaries of deceased retirees, providing for repeal, providing an effective date, and providing for severability.
Move to Don.
Is that because I proclaimed that week as retirement week? Jumped in with this?
No, because we save, we save a little money by doing this.
They're saving money, yeah.
But, it doesn't hurt the employees.
Mayor Pro Tem White made the motion, Councilman Emery made the second. This is the second final reading. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item 10B.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 78 Solid Waste of the Missouri City Code, adopting rules and regulations related to solid waste franchises, providing a penalty, providing for repeal, and providing for severability.
Who approve? Second?
Councilman Marshall made the motion, Councilman Mayor Pro Tem White made the second. Fair discussion.
Yeah, we talked, we talked to Ed about this, the city manager, you know. One of the things that, you know, I'd like to see if there's any way that we can accommodate that or at least communicate it, is that this franchise, this franchise fee is being collected for the sole purpose of our streets, the...
Reimbursement of the...
Reimbursement of, yeah, of repairs for the streets. And if there's any way that we can demonstrate that those dollars that we're actually collecting are in fact going to the, to, in our budget for that purpose. So, we...
Well, I think we need to be a little bit more broader than that. I'm not disagreeing with you. But, I think, I think the intent of these funds is for the support and maintenance of our right of ways. Because it might not just be streets. It could be things in the right of way.
The others are right of ways.
Yeah.
I agree.
We did, we heard both, one person asking for and one not. And in this case, with this particular ordinance, this wouldn't be the time at which we would do that. It'd be a process through the budget if you wanted to do so. Went back and took a look after the question came up as to what the annual collection would be in reference to streets budget itself, to get a kind of a benchmark as to the impact it would have. And our streets budget is 2.35 million annually. And we, on an annual basis, estimate to collect about $470,000 from this, being about 19 percent.
And that's up from, what was it, 370, I think, initially?
76, yeah.
In the budget, wasn't that the...
Well, that was, that was for three quarters of the year.
Oh, okay.
That wasn't annualized.
And that's, is that just Republic's piece, or is that what we anticipate?
That's across the city.
Every...
For the whole city.
For the whole city.
And so, you'll see this every year in the budget in regards to, as far as revenue of what we're getting off of the franchise fee for solid waste services. And thus, when you go through the budget process, you'll see that's the revenue. And like Bill was pointing out, what you're spending already on streets and drainage maintenance is far in excess of what you're getting in revenue-wise in relation to this account.
This'll be 5 percent, right? 5 percent of the franchise fee, right?
That's 5 percent, yes, related to the solid waste costs itself.
And then, again, to remind you that those on our, on the city's contract are not going to be charged the rate that Republic will pay that in total.
Right.
Itself.
All right. There was a motion by Councilman Marshall and a second by Mayor Pro Tem White. Is that right? All those in favor? Motion carries. Item 10C.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Missouri City, Texas, General Obligation Bonds, Series 2012, levying a tax in the payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of the Paying Agent Registry Agreement, warning the sale, approving the official statement approving the engagement of certain professionals in connection with the issuance of the bonds, providing and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law and acting other provisions relating thereto.
Mayor and Council.
It's a one-reading ordinance. Derek can come up here and join this trio if you want to. Don't sit in the back of the room. Yeah, there you go.
Mayor and Council.
Let's get the trio up here.
As part of the FY13 budget, we, there was a piece included for issue of $1.4 million for bonds that would be allocated to drainage projects. And so, I might turn you over to Joe Morrow. He conducted the sale of these bonds today.
Wes, while you're there, just for the record, the CIP includes, for which projects?
It's Cangelosie, there's like 30 little projects.
Little water hole.
This isn't a test. I just wanted to...
Water hole.
I'm failing.
Water hole.
Little water hole, you had Cangelosie and Stratford...
Yes. Stratford old Staples.
So, the public knows that we've actually, you know, we have specific projects to spend this money on, so they're aware of it.
That was a test.
That was a test.
I had the answer. I couldn't... Yes, I did.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Joe Morrow with First Southwest and Derek Mitchell with Gracewell Giuliani. This afternoon, we did have the city out in the market for competitive bids that were due at 2 o'clock today. It turned out very well for us in the marketplace. We were one of two sales in the state of Texas today. The other happened to be a school district down in the Beaumont area. We were the only city bond selling. And the other Nederland ISD was selling some bonds with a specific tax credit. So, we kind of had the stage to ourselves today. Behind tab one, we have a graph of the Bond Buyer Index for General Obligation Bonds. We use this to give us an idea of market direction. It's a weekly index that gets published. This is going over the past 10 years. And you can see that as of last Thursday, when our last data point came out, we are bumping off the bottom of historic lows here for the municipal marketplace. So, I think that, coupled with the fact that we kind of had the stage to ourselves today, turned out very well for the city. Behind tab number two, you can see the results for our bids. We had seven bidders that signed up and submitted. We were selling the bonds over a 20-year term with an eight-year call. So, on June 15th of 2020, you'll have the option to prepay the remaining bonds that are outstanding. 1.9496 is a tremendous rate for 20-year debt.
Unless you're buying them.
Exactly. If you're looking for an investment, you're keeping your money whole, I guess. Raymond James and Associates came in with the second-place bid of 2.21 percent. The difference in debt service between the two bids wound up being approximately 43,000. So, now, it's, it's a tight market. Clearly, you did very well today with the number of bids and the interest rates reflected in what you got in the bid from Bosc is phenomenal.
And we stayed at double A2?
You maintained, we went out and confirmed the rating with Moody's. Because it was a small issue, we only asked one to review, and they did confirm the double A2. They noted your strong financial management, strong demographics on the positive side, and being a part of Fort Bend County in the Houston metropolitan area, which, as you know, Fort Bend County is one of, still, one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation. So, they recognized that as, as one of the drivers for your success in the economic side. As always, one of the things that they have always pegged on us on the downside is debt levels, which they talk about direct debt. That's not the big anchor on us. It's the overlapping debt coming from the municipal utility districts and the school district, which is a fast-growth district. And as you know, or as you've probably seen from the last school bond election, it's very expensive to build high schools these days. And this area is growing so fast, it's, the need for elementary, middle, and high schools is tremendous.
Joe, I know you all probably keep an eye on this, and Derek, but refinancing. I mean, we're seeing bond rates at the lowest rate that I've ever seen them in my, in all my banking career. But, how close are we to thinking about doing some refinancing on some of that existing debt to try to get it at 1.9?
Funny that you should ask, because we did...
No, it's not funny. It's always on my mind.
We did look at this right as we were going in to prepare this issue. And then, when bids came in today, we said, let's dust that off. You have four series of bonds, two that were sold in 2004, two that were sold in 2005, that have an option date on them of June 15th, 2014. So, we're just under two years away from that date. What is dragging us a little bit on that is the fact that you're earning so little on investments that you would put in the escrow. However, it's still, it kind of comes in and out of where you'd go, okay, it would...
Double edged sword.
It is. And it's something that we're going to, with the bids that came in today, we're going to be looking at that again and talking with Wes and seeing if we can't come up with some level that we would feel would be worthwhile. And then, I would imagine, we'd come back to you with what we call a parameter sale, where we say, if we can hit these levels, are you okay authorizing us to go out and try and achieve it?
Just depends on how much Derek wants to charge us for refinancing.
Well, and that's... But, that is something that we do monitor and look at. And, you know, as I said, we looked at it as we were preparing for this one. And then, with bids today, we're, we're looking at it again, and something that we, we look, look at.
And let me just ask you something, not because Derek's standing here, but I, and I know that his firm has not been doing this that long for us. And I guess my question is, it gets back to the fee, Ed, are we paying them what we should be paying them? I think they came in on the low end of this thing, if I remember right. Are we, are we now compensating the firm what we should be?
Well, that's all a matter of, what we need to do is look at the existing contract. They took over the terms.
I know that.
So, we need to look at that.
Yes, and they took it at a low end. Can you look at that for me?
Absolutely.
And can you also look at we paying them what they're charging us?
Right.
You're doing that.
Yeah. But, to be fair to them, and I do know that they came in on the low end of it, I just want to make sure that we're compensating. Well, I hope we can refinance somebody. Like you said, you know, with CD rates that... We're thinking about, well, we, I'm not anymore, but banks are thinking about charging customers to bank with them. Kind of a, we're going to charge you to hold your money because it's safer with us and under the mattress.
So, they're just going to start admitting that they're charging us.
You may have to have a membership card even to get in.
How's that a change?
Listen to this guy, man.
They're going to start admitting it.
You build a love here. We're going to go to the bartering system. All right, is there a motion?
So, a move to award the...
Huh? No, I don't have a motion.
General Obligation Bond Contract to, the sale to the company of Bosh Inc. At an interest rate of 1.9494603 percent.
Second. Mayor Pro Tem made the motion, Councilman Ellen Cat made the second.
That was the right company, right?
All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, guys, good work. Good timing, I guess. That's the word. It's the timing. In this market today, it's, it's all about timing. You know, and if cities are in a position to borrow money today, they need to be borrowing everything they can borrow. It's, we just can't, you can't find money this cheap anymore. You can't affect, and if it doesn't affect the tax rate, it's time to borrow money, so... Good example. All right, item 11, a resolutions, 11 A.
A resolution of the City Council, City of Missouri City, Texas, adopting the Fort Bend County 2011 Hazard Mitigation Plan, including the City of Missouri City FEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
The motion.
Smooth to Don.
Mayor Pro Tem White made the motion, Councilman Marshall made the second. Unless you just wanna speak, all those in favor.
We're prepared, right?
Yeah.
That's the key.
Well, we won't be if we don't participate.
She got it in her.
Yeah, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Hated that you had to wait. 11 B.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and city secretary to attest to second restated and amended congestion mitigation traffic management agreement bond between the City of Missouri City, Texas and Metropolitan Transit Authority of Harris County, Texas, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we bring this back when, when you and the staff had a point of bringing something for council to consider.
So your motion is to remove it from the agenda?
Or to postpone?
Postpone it indefinitely. All right. Mayor Pro Tem White made the motion, Councilman Smith made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Are no announcements that I'm aware of?